In order to call the roll. Trustee Fenton.
Here.
Trustee Dodge.
There.
Trustee Calandrellle.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Getzinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of February 3, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of February 3, 2020.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll. Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrellle.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Orland Park Rotary Club raffle license.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I move to approve issuing a raffle license to the Orland Park Rotary Club to begin selling raffle tickets on Sunday, March 1, 2020, through Thursday, May 21, 2020, when the raffle drawing will take place at Silver Lake Country Club.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Catholic Charities Raffle License.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve issuing a raffle license to Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Chicago to conduct a raffle at their benefit on Saturday, March 21, 2020, at Silver Lake Country Club.
Second. Did I hear a second? Yeah. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Community Pride Award, St. Michael's Cheerleaders.
So tonight, it's my pleasure to present a Community Pride Award to St. Michael's Cheerleaders, coached by Mrs. Becky Weslow and assistant coaches Kimberly Williams and Ms. Amy Weslow. The squad won the 2019 ICAA State Championship, making this their 17th state title for St. Michael's varsity cheerleading squad. Great job, girls. And I can tell you all that you're going to remember this all your life, winning first place in state, no matter what age you went in at. So congratulations for all the hard work. I know it takes a lot of hard work. Who's the flyer?
There's three of them.
There's three of them? God bless you. All right, I'm going to call you up individually, and if you come down, we'll take pictures.
Al Tanqal. Ava Phil.
She's not here. She's in Honduras. Not on mission trip.
Adrian is over. Yana is over. Obviety. Asha Lady. Gianna Bavino. Molly Harrow.
She's not here.
Gianna Marchella. Leah Marchella. Maya Marchella. Holly Cabus. Jenna Cabus. Peyton Miller. Cilly O'Callaghan. Iris Silverman. Maggie Soss. Sarah Tadvich. Assistant Coach Kim Williams. Assistant Coach Amy Weslow.
She's not here.
Coach Peggy Weslow.
Yes. Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you very much to the board for recognizing girls. What makes this accomplishment special, some of you who are not familiar with competitive cheerleading, is we compete against the entire state, public, private schools, much like high school sports. And we are the smallest school that competes at the highest level. And they not only place first, but beat schools that were not two-tenths our size, three-tenths our size. So it was very exciting. And they do it again at the academy, and I'm so proud of them. They're tremendous athletes.
Peggy, take those other forms.
Awesome work, girls. It takes a lot of hard work to do that well in a state competition. You're welcome.
Accounts payable from February 4, 2020, to February 12, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable from February 4, 2020, to February 17, in the amount of $3,076,636.49. Still moved? Second. Any questions? Call the roll. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrellle.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda? Consent agenda. Item A, payroll from February 7, 2020. Approval. Item B, aquatic weed and algae control, 2020 to 2022, RFP 20002 award. Item C, laptop and personal computers replacements. Item D, annual traffic signal maintenance for village, state, county roadways proposal. Item E, disposal of village equipment online auction, public works, parks and grounds and recreation departments ordinance. Item F, automatic vehicle locator system services payment. Item G, extension of lease with Southwest Community Concert Band and Illinois Not-for-Profit Corporation. Item H, distribution of three recreation program guides through 22nd Century Media. Item I, amusement device operators license additions. Item J, South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association annual dues. I'll entertain a motion to pass items A through J of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Dodge.
I'd like to have some questions on item H, but otherwise, I'll move to approve items A through J, with the exception of item H.
Second. So there's a motion to approve items A through J, with the exception of H. Call the roll. Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrellle.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2020 Distribution of three recreation program guides through 22nd Century Media. I'll entertain a motion to approve the distribution of the three 2020 recreation program guides through 22nd Century Media for a cost not to exceed $21,700. So moved. Second. Trustee Dodge.
Just for staff, George, we've gone on this one a couple different ways, where we used to do it like this, then we went to the post office, and now we're back. Could you just kind of talk us through the details that staff researched?
So the reason they went away from 22nd Century Media was because the distribution was going to residents outside of the target audience. It was just based on zip codes. The 22nd Century Media has gotten much better at it, and they have. And so now, what will end up happening is, through this partnership, we're going to save about $3,700, and we will have a better distribution of the publication. So it will go out with the OP Prairie, and they've worked out all the kinks that eliminated them in the past.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Dodge.
So, George, to staff satisfaction, they've got it now wired where it's going to every one of our target households.
Exactly.
And then, good, bad, or indifferent, with newspapers, sometimes the inserts never are seen once it gets to the house. What is going to be done on the paper to make sure people know that the recreation brochure is inside?
That is a very good question, and they are going to be placing the sticker on the front of it, letting them know that there is the insert.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Calandrellle.
Very briefly, so it will be going to every household? Because I think that was another issue in the last round. I was thinking it should go to every household, because I didn't know the parade went to every household.
Yes, it's going to increase circulation from 26,685 per publication to 27,155. So it's going to do a much better job of getting to every household.
Perfect. Thanks, George.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll. Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrellle.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Intergovernmental agreement sharing of police services, equipment, and resources approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Getzinas.
I move to pass resolution number?
2001.
I move to pass resolution 2001 entitled a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Orland Park, the Village of Tinley Park, the Village of Midlothian, the Village of Orland Hills, and the City of Oak Forest for sharing of police services, personnel, equipment, and resources. And I move to authorize the village president to execute the agreement upon approval of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been moved in second, and I do believe we have a resident to speak on this issue, so we'll let him speak now, since we're going to discuss it. Jack Craven? Yes, this issue? I believe so, yeah.
Thank you. One of the things that sort of concerns me is back on February 10, there was an incident that took place about Joey's Hot Dogs over on Wolf Road. You're all familiar with that. But on Facebook, there was also a post that was put on by senior Orland official, Orland Township official, Mr. O'Grady. And that particular post was something disturbing, and I want to make sure that, you know, the situation is that I don't improperly paraphrase it. So I'd like to read that particular phrase here, if you don't mind. Excuse me a second here, I lost it. And Joey's had made a post that they were going to be closing for two days, and this was basically where, because of the vandalism, and he had stated, "This has to stop. Between the rash of vehicle and home burglaries, to Joey's being burglarized and vandalized, crime in Orland Park seems to be on the rise. Residents deserve to feel safe in their community and their homes, demand better protection from their police department." Question I have is, I thought this was an unincorporated area. Is that something that is within the boundaries of our police department? Is this something that, if it's outside the boundaries, are we responsible for something along those lines? And as a resident of 30 years, this doesn't make Orland sound too good. So that's my question to the board.
Thank you for your comments. Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
No, Joey's is not in Orland Park. It is an unincorporated Cook County, under the jurisdiction of the sheriff. But if I might respond to that post at this time?
Go ahead.
As you know, I've been in law enforcement for 48 years, and I don't publicly respond to too much misinformation or disinformation for many good reasons. However, when an official is so misinformed, or the misinformation is directed solely at one department, when this is an issue affecting a widespread area, then I have to conclude maybe the comment is less about public safety and maybe more about something else. But our residents and the public do have an absolute right to demand the best services from the Orland Park Police Department and every department in the village, and to complain when they don't get it. And when that happens, it makes us a better police department, because we have to reexamine how we are doing our job. But when you intentionally malign the men and women of the police department, or if you're actually seeking to productively address an issue, then it's usually better to do it when you know all the facts, because the facts do matter. Not only did Mr. O'Grady not call me or any of the chiefs of police within the township to discuss the issue that I'm aware of, he even refused to return my call last Tuesday at 8:10 a.m., when I became aware of this post, to try to discuss it with him and understand what his point was. If he had called, he would have found out that, as most of us know, these crimes are totally preventable and are happening throughout most of northern Illinois, including Orland Hills and Tinley Park, which are also within the township. And the fact that they were never notified about this makes me wonder why. If he called, he would have found out that Joey's Restaurant, as Mr. Craven stated, is not in Orland Park. It's in Orland Township and unincorporated Cook County. So logically, he would have directed his demands and remarks to the sheriff of Cook County, but to my knowledge, he didn't. If he had called, he would have found out that the common strategy being employed by all of our surrounding departments and all of law enforcement is to address this issue via education, prevention, and enforcement, but he didn't call. If he had called, he would have found out that the towns of Midlothian, Tinley Park, Orland Hills, Oak Forest, and Orland Park have endorsed a common strategy that we have implemented of education, a publicity campaign on a regional basis, and he started this over two weeks ago, and an upcoming regional enforcement strategy as well, but he didn't call to find that out. If he had called, he would have found out about the regional intelligence sharing among the police departments in the Southland, and would have found out about a regional mayors and chiefs of police meeting just last Wednesday, attended by our mayor and our deputy chief, to share intelligence and best practices about this issue, but he didn't. If he had called, I would have told him in detail the Orland Park strategy, using technology, information, education, prevention, and enforcement, including trustees assigned to ZDO stickering cars, trustee Malani, in the middle of the night, which we have done repeatedly. And I would have told him that our publicity and education program was also directed to unincorporated Orland Township as well. I believe Mr. O'Grady knows about the expertise of this department, because it was in 2017 when $60,000 of taxpayers' dollars were embezzled from the General Assistance Fund, Food Pantry Fund, and the General Town Fund of Orland Township, and he turned to the Orland Park Police Department to address the matter, which led to the arrest indictment of one of the township employees and information that there are additional fraudulent checks that have been negotiated. So like Orland Park, Orland Township residents also deserve to know that the township has safeguarded their taxpayer dollars and demand greater accountability from township government when it comes to internal financial controls and criminal activity. If Mr. O'Grady had called, they could have found out how he, his government, and his board could be part of the solution, part of our long-term community policing efforts, much like our churches, schools, and other agencies that have joined with us in our efforts for prevention and education, rather than puning the ongoing efforts of our police departments. And finally, if Mr. O'Grady had called, I would have directed him to the FBI Crime in the United States Statistics for 2017, 18, and 19, where he would have found that Orland Park had either the lowest or second-lowest number of crimes against persons, that's violent crimes, for any city in the state of Illinois with 50,000 residents or more. That's the lowest number of index crimes, the crimes we report to the state of Illinois and that are reported to the FBI. I'd much rather work constructively with Mr. O'Grady in Orland Township, if possible, but I'm not going to stand by, as I never have in 48 years of policing, and allow the men and women of the department to be the victim of misinformation with whatever the intention is of impugning the hard work of these men and women of law enforcement for whatever his reasons might be. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving this opportunity to say something on behalf of the police department, and I'd be happy to share our efforts with anyone, anytime, in regards to our strategy, in regards to the car thefts that have been going on throughout the northern suburbs and frankly, the whole country. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
When I saw this come through, I knew I was going to be in full support of this initiative. I mean, I think our police department does a tremendous job in keeping our village safe, and they have done that for years. You know, this is an opportunity to actually extend that reach, to work together with our surrounding communities, to actually resolve this issue that's going on today. You know, keep in mind that Orland Park is one of the safest communities in Illinois, not one of the safest, as Chief McCarthy just pointed out. You know, our department constantly spreads awareness, they engage the public, and they alert the public proactively of potential issues. And today, I got to see some of that, where I was actually at the Teen Citizen Police Academy this morning, where the department starts to influence teens to become more aware and more involved in what's going on in their community. And it was great seeing everybody participating in that. You know, keep in mind, there's close to 40,000 vehicles in Orland Park today, registered. That being said, there's been a number of cars that have been quote-unquote "broken into," and that number is probably between 100 to 150 approximately. All of these events, nearly all of them were not forced-entry events with these vehicles, and all of them could have been avoidable. You know, these crimes happen everywhere, however, social media has had the propensity to kind of amplify the situation more than it is actually a problem. You know, unfortunately, there's four very simple and common sense steps to reduce and to avoid these events. Number one, lock your car. Number two, don't leave your keys in the car. Number three, don't leave your garage door opener in a car that is parked outside. And number four, hide or remove your valuables when you come inside. Pretty simple steps. I believe in what our department is doing and their message and trying to convey it. I believe in it so much that, like Chief McCarthy said, I'm actually out there taking an active part in it. I'm out there with the ZDO organization, putting stickers on cars to let people know, one, it's a very simple problem to solve, and number two, if you see something happening, let people know. Say something. Call the police department when you see any issues. And Chief McCarthy, you know, as we were listening to Jack Craven talk about Mr. O'Grady and his sharing this message, refresh my memory on this. Didn't his car get stolen out of his driveway because it was unlocked with his keys in it?
I think that could have happened.
Okay. I was just curious. And, you know, I think it's a tragedy that Joey's was broken into and vandalized in Orland Township. I hope that the perpetrators are caught and prosecuted. However, you know, hearing this, I think, you know, Mr. O'Grady should spend less time on Facebook and probably more time out in his car, driving around, so he can actually distinguish the boundaries between Orland Park and Orland Township. And on top of that, maybe spend more time helping on the issue of crime instead of stirring the pot and falsely reporting on it. On top of that, today, you know, he's managed to go out again on another hot topic in Orland Park about the pioneers. And, you know, instead of recommending putting children on contaminated soil at the old Andrew's site, you know, I think he should probably spend more time focusing on, you know, his township, instead of trying to come up with solutions that are obviously misinformed once again. So thank you, Jack, for sharing with us.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor. Second.
Trustee Dodge.
No, I think Trustee Healy was first.
Oh, Trustee Healy.
You know, we all up here, I have to believe, we may disagree at times, but I think this board especially has, I've seen it demonstrate good, reasonable judgment for most of the time. This, Paul O'Grady doesn't practice, he doesn't have good judgment. We found this first out when he started a PAC to oppose our election last year and spent over $10,000 in these negative ads to oppose us. The election's over, we swept, so I would say paying that money was his poor judgment. Being negative ads, another poor judgment. He's got a history of this, and it's, it makes us wonder how safe, you know, how good our money is being, how good of stewards they are for our money in the township, and it makes us worry about it. The, I believe our police department has done an excellent job for a long time in protecting the village. This is a result of good professional judgment by you and your command staff and every officer out there that I've experienced. I witnessed some of the inner workings of the police department from my position as a trustee. We can all be proud of the work our police department does. Thanks to Tim McCarthy and his crew, we should all sleep well, knowing our safety is in good hands. I do not worry about our police department. I do worry about the management of the township.
Trustee Dodge.
A couple things. So, Tim, thanks. I appreciate what you guys in the police department have been doing for years. Glad I've been certainly supportive of all that. On an issue like this specifically, this is a supplement and in addition to the Major Crimes Task Force, correct?
Yes, Trustee Dodge, this is going to be a smaller task force of five towns only, but in order to allow us to work together, we need an intergovernmental agreement, because it's not a spontaneous mutual aid. Spontaneous mutual aid, we can go anywhere, anytime, if requested to do so as a result of an emergency. But a pre-planned action like this requires an intergovernmental agreement to be totally legal, and the other towns are also doing it. Now we have other towns calling us, asking to join in it. So at some point, we'll be putting 25 police officers, not to mention where we're going to put them, but in certain areas where we think they'll have the most effect to prevent and deter this type of activity.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, because, Tim, you and I have had a number of conversations over the years, that as we see what is happening with what used to be the criminal justice system in Cook County erode. the criminal justice system in Cook County erode, you cannot help but notice the starting towns for this are all in Cook County. And I don't know if they're having the same issue in our neighboring communities in Will, but bad guys have cars, and the fact that we're part of an effort to kind of share intelligence and, and work between the police departments is great, because I'm just, it's frustrating to me what's happening to the livability in the southwest suburbs broadly because of what we're not doing well with criminal justice and criminal law reform. It's a shame.
Will County's been hit very hard in certain areas, including several kidnappings, uh, at ATMs and banks and so forth, they've been hit particularly hard. Uh, and they are doing similar things with Mokena, uh, New Lennox, and Frankfurt in the, with Will County. So, uh, many of the communities, and we have great communications with Mokena, Frankfurt, and all those towns, uh, constantly sharing information.
Glad to see it. Thank you. Would love to see this expand.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
I just want to thank the police department, as I've always said, we've got the best in the United States, so, Tim, please pass along to your staff, including Deputy Chief Mitchell, who's here, um, a great job done by everyone on a day-to-day basis, keeping this community safe. And it goes beyond words to say to the residents, and I have, one of my neighbors, stuff taken away, the car was never locked, laptop right on the front seat. Shame on you, you're intelligent enough to lock your car if you're going to leave it outside.
That's all we ask.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Calendrell. I just want to repeat a couple of things that my fellow trustees said. First of all, uh, the police department does a great job. As a former Cook County State's Attorney, I can truly say that you are one of the top of the top in the, in the state of Illinois, not only arresting some prosecutions, so a full circle, um, entity. And we are in Cook County, so we have limitations with what we can do with the criminal justice system, so I do appreciate the proactive, this is pretty much the south of the fifth district, the proactive teaming up of towns to address an issue that needs to be taken care of. Um, I hope that it's, uh, this is start of being proactive. Um, I know that's, you could always ask to be appointed a special prosecutor if you wanted to start picking some own crimes and be more proactive in the criminal justice system, because if Cook County won't do it, I think we need to start making more steps in that way. So I appreciate that, and keep up the good work, um, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Getzinas.
I just wanted to say, you know, with social media, I think we have a lot of opportunists out there, trying to gain mileage, or stir the pot, whatever you want to say, whether it be the issue with the Ring of the Mall, Hope Covenant, Joey's, and now with Pioneers. So I think there's a common thread there, and which is nothing to do with the abilities or talent, or accomplishments, or what you do as a police department. And there's other, other agenda, I think it's very clear. But just to say, you know, I work with a lot of people who come to Orland Park, who move within Orland Park, and the biggest praise we hear, or I hear, is for our police department, not to slight any other village department, but people have said over and over and over again how they'd never leave Orland, and how they're so very proud of our police department. So that's something that you on the street don't hear a lot, I'm sure, you know, you're chasing the bad guys, not the good guys, but there's a lot of people out there, this board and residents, that really appreciate what you do day in and day out. So thank you for that.
Any other comments? Um, so I'll wrap this up with, uh, you know, the, the issue that's on the table here, um, the intergovernmental agreement is, uh, is something that, you know, that the chief's been working on for quite a while, and make a lot of sense, and, um, to trustee Dodge's point, you know, criminal justice in Cook County has obviously taken a hit because the, the lack of prosecutions, and yet, in spite of that, look at the numbers of our police department. That speaks volumes to how proactive we are on these issues, and how proactive you are, your leadership is, and your, and the police department as a whole, and all of our line officers are. So in, in the face of what we know is a lack of prosecution, with criminals continually left out, let out and everything else, our crime is still down again to lowest levels in 27 years, it's down yet again in 2019. But Chief, just to echo your point, um, the supervisor didn't call the mayor's office either. Um, seems to be a common theme, didn't call it for any of the issues that were raised here. And he has my cellphone number too, and he never called that either. Um, so, um, I would have told him the same thing, that we're having this, one of the reasons we're having this agreement is because the other towns have seen the success that we've had, and they want to mimic what we're doing. Um, additionally, the regional meeting that I was talking about, to your point, trustee Dodge, was actually in Will County, the regional chiefs and mayors meeting that we had, that they asked us to come because they know that we've been having success, and they're, they're trying to figure out how to be more successful in their area and use what we've learned to help them there. So that's part of what we were talking about at that meeting. Um, so, um, what I would have told the supervisor, I, I had this sitting on my desk, actually, when, when I was made aware of this, um, page, page six of our, our message from the police chief and our, our report that we get, uh, you know, so we get a, a report here for the police every year, and, uh, on page six, third paragraph, um, "We are very pleased to report that the categories of index crime, murder, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, battery, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson, which are reported to the FBI, dropped, dropped again by 6% from 1,000, 1,037 index crimes in 2018 to 974 in 2019, which followed a drop of 8% from 2017 to 2018. This is the third straight year that we've seen significant decreases in index crime, and it's the lowest number of index crime in Orland Park in over 25 years. My heartfelt thanks to, to the men and women of the department for their dedication and hard work keeping our residents and visitors safe. Job well done again. As noted in 2019, we experienced a significant drop in crimes against property and a slight increase in crimes against person. The most sensational crime was a murder of Orland Square Mall, however, the offender was in custody in less than 48 hours, in a hit-and-run accident where one woman was killed and another injured outside a local restaurant. That offender was also in custody in less than 24 hours. Um, also some, I think the same individual might have tried to, um, to, you know, run with that on, on social media as well. Um, the most common crime was retail theft, not surprisingly, 12 million square feet of retail, followed by thefts of unlocked cars, which is completely preventable to trustee Maloney's point, which is why we spend so much time trying to let everyone know to lock your cars, because it's preventable. A theft from an unlocked car occasionally leads to an auto theft, as it is far too common for people to leave their keys in their unlocked cars. I do think the township supervisor's aware of that. This can also lead to the thieves entering a resident's garage, or even their home, when they find their garage door opener and open and unlock cars. These crimes are totally preventable, simply by locking your car and not leaving your keys in an unlocked car. Let's stop this crime in Orland Park by locking our cars and not leaving the keys in them. We have done numerous public service announcements to bring attention to this matter, as well as sending out our community service officers to put stickers on every car parked on the street or in driveways to remind residents to lock their cars." So that's from the chief, um, four paragraphs from the chief's, uh, uh, report to us on that. So, um, we're very well aware, this IGA is because these towns want to learn from all the success that we've had on this, and they want to mimic that, and we want to work together to help them, because if we identify the crime, we find the criminals, doesn't matter whether we find them in Oak Forest, or Tinley Park, or Midlothian, or Mokena, or Frankfurt, as long as we get them and we get them locked up. So that's what we want to do, and that, so that's what this is about. With that, call the roll.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calendrell.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
NIMEC renewable approval, village owner counts.
Resolution number? Mr. Mayor, could I have a resolution number?
2002.
Trustee Healy.
I move to pass resolution 2002 entitled "The Resolution Authorizing the Participation in the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative, NYMEC, and Authorizing the Village Manager to Approve Contracts with the Lowest-Cost Electricity Provider Based on Bids Received During 2020 Bid Process."
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? So my only comment on this is that in the past with, uh, with NYMEC, on the broader village program, we had it, we had an issue on, on the one that was done more recently, because the ComEd rates are coming down. This is specifically just for the village properties, correct?
Correct. These are the village, village accounts.
It's not renegotiating that one. All right. Perfect. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Calendrell.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. And, and did you have something for us here?
Pico, Sharon Durling from NYMEC is here, and just wanted to give a brief presentation of an award that the village received, as well as the aggregation process.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor and trustees. Um, since 2012, just to give you a 32nd history, the village has engaged in an electric aggregation program that voters in, um, Village of Orland Park approved of, and in that time, the village saved a cumulative near $7 million, over $350 per average participating household. So that was great. We continued to go out to bid, and when it was, we were unable to receive any more savings for rate payers, uh, the village board agreed to a new program where everyone paid the ComEd rate, but we're also receiving 100% green renewable energy for the village. So, have a little announcement today, and your supplier, we have an executive from MC Squared Energy Services, your supplier, that's going to present you a certificate. May I say that the EPA ranks communities in the United States in terms of the volume of green power consumed? So there's Washington DC, Portland, Oregon, Cleveland, Cincinnati, Orland Park is number 13 in the United States in terms of communities consuming green power in terms of volume, something really to be proud of. I'm super excited about that. So, that's an EPA ranking, and they have a certificate, and we have an award to present to the mayor. Um, just one thing, that would be equivalent to reducing 138 million pounds of coal fewer pounds burned, that's just one example, and we have, um, a handout for folks, so. (applause) Oh, it is? That's one member of him, yeah, this is a particular, uh, from, from, from MC Square. Actually, I can say, it's an EPA green power partner community designation. (inaudible).
Thank you.
Mayor Pico.
Trustee Dodge.
I can't help myself. I, uh, just wanted to let everybody know that I'm thrilled we picked exactly the right color for our gem logo.
Any other comments? Well, we're proud to receive the award, and, uh, thank you very much, uh, you know, we, I mean, I think everybody here, I don't think you get any disagreement that, uh, we want, everybody wants to keep, you'll get disagreement on what the arguments are broadly nationally, world, or whatever, but I think we all agree that we want to keep our community, our environment clean. And, uh, what that ultimately means as far as the, the end and, and all the various policies, I don't know, but I, I don't know of anybody that I've ever met that says, "Oh, I just want a litter, I want trash, I want," I think everybody wants to, wants to do things as cleanly as possible, and I don't think we're any exception, so, thank you. There's no, are there any other residents that want to speak? Okay. Um, we'll move to board comments. Trustee Fenton.
Um, yes, I'd like to, first of all, thank Public Works and the Parks Department for the great job that they did on our last snowstorm, hopefully it's the last one for the year. Um, but you did a great job, you were out there proactive, and everybody was able to move on the roads right away to get to work and get home safely. I'd also like to, uh, thank Sarah for another great, um, presentation. I went Saturday to the Capone presentation, it was very, very interesting, learned a lot of information. Uh, we raised $500 for the museum, we had over 40 participants, and we got five new memberships out of it. Um, Bob Siegelbach over there was also there, he's a member of the museum board. Great job. We also have a great event coming up on March 7th from 10:00 to 11:30, and it's Lincoln and His Four Generals, and I went to it last year, it's a fantastic, uh, presentation, they come in their uniforms, and you would think you were back in the time with Lincoln, he's standing right there, and his generals are giving the plan of what they're going to do. So, um, it's $10 for members and $15 for non-members, it's a great presentation, get out there. And also, we have new artifacts coming in too, also for the educational, um, display that's out there, so, at the museum. So, great job by the museum board, and, uh, Sarah for doing a great job with her volunteers, her volunteers are phenomenal. So, thank you very much.
Trustee Dodge.
Just a couple of comments. Um, echo the things that Kathy said, but, uh, you know, to the broader conversation we had, I think that a number of towns in the area looked to Orland Park for, for leadership on a number of things. I'm, I'm thrilled to see some of the things they're doing on both major crimes task force, but also this, and hopefully it expanded, so glad we are in a position to be able to, uh, to do that. And, um, just broadly, thanks to staff, and then for, at some not-too-distant future committee, the whole meeting, I wouldn't mind if we could talk about our borders, you know, because some of the stuff that's on South Wolf has been there for a while, and it's always been in the county, and the county has different appearance standards and different zonings and different everything, as we've heard. You know, we've kind of taken a look at this a couple times, but at some point in the future, why don't we just maybe talk about that as a board and the committee of the whole, about what it would take to square off our borders? There's implications on costs and timing, I got all that, but might be a, a good discussion to have at a future committee of the whole. Thank you.
Trustee Calendrell.
Uh, to repeat, I'm not going to repeat everyone else, so, uh, repeat, uh, play back Kathy and, uh, James, but also want to, St. Michael's left really quickly, but I want to give them kudos. I think the head coach has been there since I've been in school, I graduated in 99, and I think she's got all those 17 championships under her belt, so, um, that's a great accomplishment to keep, no matter who, what the student is, the student name, that keeps on winning championships, so congratulations to the program in St. Michael's, and, uh, I just want, I want to say that, but they left too quickly to say that, so, this is on the video. Thank you.
Trustee Healy.
We have a state champion cheerleading squad, we've got a green, we're number 13 in the green use of energy as, for the city. We've got a, a, a top-notch museum activities going on, and we've got the number one police force. Who wouldn't want to move into Orland Park, is all I got to say, so, thank you.
Uh, trustee Getzinas.
I wanted to say congratulations to Chief on 48 years in law enforcement, I don't think a lot of us realize that, and, um, I'm hoping you can celebrate your 50th anniversary here.
So Chief, you started when you were two? Again, I want to thank you, Chief, I want to thank all of your command staff, I won't, oh, sorry. Trustee Maloney, I thought he spoke so much earlier, he didn't have any more to say.
I'd like to thank Mayor Pico for giving me a chance to talk tonight. Uh, no. Um, once again, congratulations to the St. Mike's cheerleaders, that's a fantastic feat. Um, we also had our Southwest Community Concert Band play this weekend, and it sold out, so that was a great event. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, the police department had their, uh, Teen Citizen Police Academy, they had about 16 kids there today, learning about, you know, what a great job our department does. So, you know, keep in mind that we live in one of the safest communities in the state, and as residents, you know, we need to be a part of that and keeping it that way. So, lock your cars, hide your valuables, don't leave your keys in your car, or your garage door opener if it's outside. Simple choices resolve simple problems.
Thank you, and, and I apologize, but I must admit, you're growing your hair out, it's really confusing me.
It's confusing me too.
So, again, thanks, Chief, to you, the command staff, the entire department, and I know you heard it last week, I spoke to, um, to the department in the morning and in the afternoon, but you guys do a phenomenal job, and, uh, very proud, um, to, to be the mayor, very proud that you're in Orland Park. Uh, the snow removal crews continue to do a great job, um, and they will continue, I think you're, you're dreaming if you think that was the last snow there, Kathy, but...
I love the snow, so I put hair.
Uh, but, uh, they've been doing a fantastic job. Yes, the Southwest Community Band played, and yes, they were really good, I was actually there, and, uh, they're, they're fantastic, and I really, uh, highly recommend people come out and, and listen to some band music. They had, uh, you know, variety music, some marches, some other, and it was a, you know, good hour, 10-minute, hour, 15-minute concert, but it's free, and, uh, it was fantastic. Um, I'm sorry I missed Capone, but I had another engagement, and unfortunately, I'm going to miss, uh, your, your generals as well, because I'm going to be out of town that weekend, and, uh, for anyone who hasn't, uh, seen anything on Lincoln's generals, it's fantastic, as well as the book Killer Angels, which is maybe the best leadership book ever written, uh, about his generals. So, um, with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to go into executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific village employees, C, setting a price for sale or lease of village property, D, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second.
compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific village employees, C, setting a price for sale or lease of village property, D, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.